Okay, then, testing one, two, you see the meter?
Um. Definitely. Um. Well, they say most modern. They just ask you like, what is the first thing we're going to do? So, you don't have to imagine you're on your seat, but you're sort of talking to your boss or something, you know, it's not money. It's about how the. We do this as well. I think the program makes a lot of difference. Yeah. So. 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 And the ones whose side was over. Okay. Because I was going to ask you to do that. Go quick. And I just gave them a print copy. It's online, which they have. Yeah. And I had actually. But I think you're. They have no worries. They love those two.
Be careful sitting down. They can bite you.
That arm's fine. Right. Thirty. And our. Look at you. I'm sorry. 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 It's just, it's just my. Do you need a video? You want to do this? No. He's okay. I'm not sure. 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 After about two weeks, I started to see. It's a disaster. Yeah, what is, yeah, what's? What is that? If you get a. I'll. Supply with the. I think it's. 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 I think it's.
Good afternoon, and I would like to welcome you this afternoon to the Library Board of Trustees meeting. Our first agenda item is going to be, we're moving that number two on the agenda up, and our city clerk will be swearing in our two newly appointed trustees.
Great. First, Carolyn, we'll have you as sworn in. You can stand up. Oh, if family, friends are here, if you want to come down and take pictures, it's definitely fine, yeah. Don't worry. All right. So once you get your position, take your time, and we'll resolve. All right. So you're just going to repeat after me, you ready to write in? And state, "I."
"I."
State your name.
Carolyn Clemmons.
"Do solemnly swear."
"Do solemnly swear."
"I will support and defend."
"I will support and defend."
"The Constitution of the United States."
"The Constitution of the United States."
"And the Constitution of the State of California."
"And the Constitution of the State of California."
"Against all enemies."
"Against all enemies."
"Foreign and domestic."
"Foreign and domestic."
"I will bear true faith."
"I will bear true faith."
"And allegiance."
"And allegiance."
"To the Constitution of the United States."
"To the Constitution of the United States."
"And the Constitution of the State of California."
"And the Constitution of the State of California."
"I take this obligation freely."
"I take this obligation freely."
"Without any mental reservation."
"Without any mental reservation."
"Or purpose of evasion."
"Or purpose of evasion."
"And I will well."
"And I will well."
"And faithfully."
"And faithfully."
"Discharge the duties."
"Discharge the duties."
"Upon which."
"Upon which."
"I am about to enter."
"I am about to enter."
Congratulations, welcome board.
Thank you so much.
John will have the chance to do the same thing, and if you have family or friends who want to take a picture, by all means, it'd be great. All right. Excellent. Do you favor raise your right hand and repeat after me? "I."
"I."
State your name.
John Chua.
"Do solemnly swear."
"Do solemnly swear."
"I will support and defend."
"That I will support and defend."
"The Constitution of the United States."
"The Constitution of the United States."
"And the Constitution of the State of California."
"And the Constitution of the State of California."
"Against all enemies."
"Against all enemies."
"Foreign and domestic."
"Foreign and domestic."
"I will bear true faith."
"I will bear true faith."
"And allegiance."
"And allegiance."
"To the Constitution of the United States."
"To the Constitution of the United States."
"And the Constitution of the State of California."
"And the Constitution of the State of California."
"I take this obligation freely."
"I take this obligation freely."
"Without any mental reservation."
"Without any mental reservation."
"Or purpose of evasion."
"Or purpose of evasion."
"And I will well."
"And I will well."
"And faithfully."
"And faithfully."
"Discharge the duties."
"Discharge the duties."
"Upon which."
"Upon which."
"I am about to enter."
"I am about to enter."
Congratulations, welcome board. Great.
Thank you very much. I'm going to deviate just a second or two from our regular agenda, and I'm going to ask both John and Carolyn to just give us a very quick update of their resume, so to speak. We want to congratulate both of them, both of them, and welcome to our board, and we'd like to know just a little bit about you. So Carolyn, we'll let you go first.
Great, wonderful. So I'm Carolyn Clemmons. I was born and raised in San Diego, attended the University of San Diego where I majored in Political Science and French, minored in Accounting. After that, I went to work for a mortgage firm where I sold mortgages, then decided that that wasn't really for me, went over to the East Coast and did my graduate degree in Security Studies with Georgetown University, so that was within their school of law and services. And since then, I have been working in project management for companies that work for the Defense Department. So right now, I serve as a project manager for Northrop Grumman's Aerospace Systems.
Thank you very much. John?
John Chua, also a native of San Diego, graduated from San Agustin High School. Did my undergraduate degree at University of San Francisco in Operations Management, minor in chemistry. After two years in the Army, I came back and did a couple of small business things, and then went to work for solar turbines and procurement. After that, for Pacific Southwest Airlines and procurement. And during that time, I also got my masters at University of San, Cal, San Diego State University, it wasn't back then, in finance with a emphasis in institutional finance. Seen a lot of similarities here. I spent the majority of my career in aerospace after moving to Dallas, working for a business company that's now owned by Boeing. I switched over to project management and sales and marketing, which is where I've spent the rest of my career, working for ore industries and working for a smaller aerospace company, Ben Corona, where I, when I left that business in 2003, we were, we were just finishing up moving up here to Escondido, moving business year 2000. I had a couple of small businesses in here in town locally, up until a few years ago, where I guess I'm officially using the R-word now, and trying to be involved in the community with Chamber of Commerce, just in time to use it. Now with the library.
Thank you, John. Well, welcome to both of you. We really appreciate your service, and your backgrounds look like you're a great asset to our library board. Thank you. You all received a copy in advance of the minutes of our meeting held on March 14th. Are there any additions or corrections? Otherwise, I would need a motion for approval of those minutes.
Can I still move?
It's been moved by Elmer and seconded by Carolyn.
What? Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, so we're using the touch system for that, so moved by trustee.
It's hard to teach old dogs new tricks. I'm not used to having this in front of me. That's really nice. All right. Anyway, we're very pleased that you pointed that out. Anyway, all, at this time, would you please vote? Elmer?
Oh, his is, neither button's off, but I see these indicating yes, so it's a motion approved, five zero.
Current business, our next item is the update on the volunteer community outreach liaison. And Elmer, you're the one that's monitoring this.
Yes, I can now perhaps maybe take a few minutes to help our trustees understand what this is all about. Thank you. Some, some months ago, the Board of Trustees discussed the problem, if it is the problem, but the reality that even though we have a lot of people coming in every day, maybe thousands or whatever, there's a lot of repetition of the same people coming into the library. And we made this assumption because we have such a large community, about 154, whatever thousand that are there. There are a lot of people who live in Escondido and have lived here for some time, haven't been in a library. And so their perception might be based on their earlier experience, either, you know, as a young person or a long time ago. And libraries, as we know, change significantly. We thought it would be a good idea to have some, some sort of program where we help reach, to reach the people who we assume don't come to the library at all, or seldom come to the library, to reach them and bring them into the library. We were convinced that a lot of people who are in the library will be amazed at what they see, computers, technology, just a host of things that are very, very much used by the people who come in the library. So we created a set committee, built a term of end on an outreach liaison group that's kind of separated. And so we sought to find out if there'd be any volunteers who were likely to be on that committee. And we were very fortunate to have two people. First, we have a person who has a long business background, and she's also an active member on the board of the Friends of the Library. So she's very conversant towards the library and the library. And then the other person that we knew, but she had a great background, so she's, she's also on the committee. I serve as the trustee contact of this committee. But one of the things that we want to educate the public about is all of the services that are in the building. And I need to say this close to the manner of the library. There is outstanding outreach program for the staff the library already have. They reach out into the community, schools, organizations, and those people are amazed at what's going on in the library and very kind of, very, certain services are provided by the library. So anyway, the, the idea is basically to train these two volunteers, train them in a sense of, they need to know what's going on in the library. So when they reach out to the public, they're conversant with all of the various services. And their task would be to bring in small groups, large, whatever, people who would be willing to come in and spend a little bit of time learning what's going on in the library. And that would be coordinated with the library volunteer, Cookie Allen, who's the coordinator of the staff of volunteers. She is, she has consented to help train these two people, but she is now going through the process of training our two people who are on this committee, someone who's going on in the library. I think, I may have, I'm redundant in saying this, but I'll say it again anyway. I wonder, when we started this program, I started talking to the staff about and so forth, there's a lot going on. The staff, there's a whole community that's gaining a lot. And I think that's a trip to the library, the library and the staff. If they're doing a wonderful job, then the public gives them ideas, buy them, book them, so on and so forth. Anyway, that's where we are right now. We can't say their role to be educated, and then they will start reaching out to various groups and organizations and try and encourage them, or encourage them to come in and visit.
Elmer wasn't just pointed out to us very vividly when we did the strategic plan, when we started going out into those meetings, and we discovered that some very well-educated people in our community really didn't realize all the services that were going on in the library. One question I have for you, will she, I think it's she, the lady I interviewed was a she, so will she go out into the community and like take a program also, as opposed to just inviting people?
Not this time. But that may be something for perhaps in the future. Because for example, today I got a request from her from Sherman, from Moon's Foundation, and she said, "We'd like to have a program, and we'd like to have someone come out and help us about that." Well, I worked, I'll be working with the staff regarding that kind of thing and so forth. So, once again, it's a thing, it's for people in the building that perhaps have not been in the building and would be amazed, would be amazed, and then they would be communicators to other people, by the way, not in the building, or what's going on.
Well, one of the things that I'm always most impressed with in our library is the 200-plus volunteers, because I see them not only as doing a great deal of work and servicing our library, but they're our key communicators. Those people do not go out in the library, in the community, and never talk about what they're doing in their, in their work capacity as volunteers. And so I think all of this fits in with one of the major goals of the board, which was marketing. And I, and I want to compliment the staff on all the different things that they've been doing the last year and a half that relate to marketing, and I think some of that is actually in the director's report this week, this, this meeting.
Ron, I would invite the trustees, all trustees, if you're the one who might be a volunteer to be on that committee, please tell the office and the department about the role of the department, what they'd like to go on. Because the more people we have on that committee, the bigger opportunity we have reaching to the conversation.
Does anybody else have a question or comment for Elmer? Elmer, thank you for allowing me to interrupt, if this has a lot of possibility.
Eric?
And so, do you have a person already that is going to do it, to go into the community or?
Linda, Linda Palmer, who is on the board of directors of Friends of the Library Board, very active, she's a volunteer and so forth, and has business experience in the past. So she is volunteer to be the chair of the committee. The other person around me, she is also a new member from the Friends of the Library, who's helped them in shots and stuff like that. So they're the two that are beginning of them, and they will outreach to the community and start to talk about it. And after they get trained and when the library offering in the building.
And who's going to do the training in Florida?
Cookie Allen, who is a volunteer toward them, she's going to coordinate the training of the people, remember, she would be the liaison for the staff, the doctor, that's one of the, one of the key persons on staff, and talk about how can we educate these people. And also Cookie will be, will be the, I don't want to say monitor, but one of the things we want to avoid is that our two volunteers will be very excited about doing this, start reaching out to the glaive and asking all staff members to get involved. And the way we're working it is, no, you reach out to the staff through Cookie Allen, who would have sensitivity, who's, the staff isn't just sitting around waiting for things to do. So we're, we're going, they're going to learn, and we're like, I'm going to learn. If I've been in this building for a hundred years and I've walked along in my, I've something going on in service, you know.
Actually, yeah, that's, that's great. Actually, I would like to be part of it as well, to, to learn, and I think the new trustees as well, and I would be, I guess it would be good for all trustees to, to know what's going on and be up to date with all the programs that, that we offer.
But Cookie's a good, good, good beginning for this.
That's right. Yeah, absolutely.
We all want to be, because there are a lot of things going on in our community and I know what's going on in the neighborhood. So how, how?
You know, and all of us, not necessarily being liaisons to the community, but we are the face of the library too, as trustees. So that falls on us as well, to educate the public, whether we do it individually or in groups. So, so to know exactly what's going on and what's offered currently by the library would be very helpful to all of us.
How follow you both?
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Our next agenda item is the strategic plan process. Patricia?
Actually, Elmer, thank you for that, it's a good segue into this. In front of you, you will see several pages of the update, and per the board's direction at the March meeting, you had given me your updated priorities. So those are listed, and our marketing, the program development and outreach, the Hispanic outreach, literacy, and then safety and security. Within the strategic plan process, above each one of those categories, you'll see the goal that it connects to. And I have a show and tell. For board members who are new to the board, you will be receiving a lengthy Excel spreadsheet document, which is the outlined strategic plan goals and priorities as well. And for the board members who recognize this, I will bring for the next meeting. You had also suggested maybe quarterly, having this updated, so you can kind of go along along and keep track of this yourselves. I will have those copies for you then at the May meeting, so you can kind of take care of that. I will update it as to where we are at this point, but then if you want to monitor it or go through it with this list, that's, you're planning and organizing priority and preferences, but we'll have that for you and I'll email that to you as well. We also talked about keeping them here, so you don't have to bring them back and forth. We can do that if that's okay with the staff, or I can bring them to and from the library for each board meeting. We can decide the logistics, so that would ever work best. The actual bullet points here that you see are just a drop in the bucket. They're not everything that our staff does on a regular basis. These aren't the things that are necessarily programmed and on our events calendar or on our webpage. So these are the things that we actually are going out to. These are the events that are in the community. These are the groups and organizations and schools that have invited us in, and they're also the places that we have invited ourselves into and that we are welcome and are asked to return. So I can go over these in detail if you want to, but I just really want to emphasize the fact that at least two to four times a week, including Sundays and evenings and Saturdays, we have staff members going out into the community, and this is kind of the general snapshot of that. We also are looking at revamping some of the things that have been longstanding programs. And it's not that we are taking them away, we are actually enhancing them and expanding them. So different staff members have taken on different responsibilities and duties per either their interests and/or the community's needs. So you'll see things under especially the Hispanic outreach priority. We have a couple of different staff members who are really making sure that's one of their top priorities and is one of their passions. So we're increasing and we're also just changing the way things are done a little bit for some of the discussion groups and the Spanish selection. In the library itself, next time you're in, please either wander through or ask one of the staff members. We are expanding that collection, so you'll see some furniture being moved and some shelves that are currently bare, but that's because we are expanding and moving and shifting the collection. So those are the sort of things that go on, as well as the things that we take out to the community and events. And if you're ever interested too, I can show you a snapshot of it, kind of just one of our daily or monthly calendars of what that looks like for everybody that's involved in that. And I also want to make note that this is everybody on the staff, anybody who's interested in going out, including the customer service staff and library associates, everybody who's interested has that opportunity. And it has been very rewarding for the staff. It's developed team, as well as got people into the community that may not have otherwise had that opportunity representing the library. So it's been very positive all around. So any questions or comments? I'm glad and interested to hear.
Ron, can I add, Joanna? I'd like to add just a couple, two things that I just got an update on today that even Patricia doesn't know about yet. So Deputy City Manager William Wolfe just gave me an update that the Rangers will be starting at the library on May 1st, which is next Wednesday. So, yeah, we're very happy about that, and we appreciate the partnership with the Lakes and Open Space Superintendent who's making that happen very quickly. So that's a positive update. And the other thing I'd like to update you on is the fact that we have installed new signage today on the library campus that cites the municipal codes section that authorizes the library campus to be considered a recreational area, and therefore when the facility is closed, the campus is closed. This helps to improve the enforcement ability of both the Rangers and the police when there are loiterers who are on the campus outside of our open hours. So those are two steps that we've, that we're taking in the right direction to improve the safety and security as well.
Well, I want to thank Mr. Wolfe. I thought our meeting last, our last meeting was the most uplifting potential solution to this problem for a long time, because I realize that homelessness is not a problem of the library, it's a problem for all of us. But we've been kind of around this problem, and none of us have known exactly what to do, add more security guards, add more. He gave us more hope that there was a potential plan that could really improve this. And I think the fact that the Rangers have a lot more ability to handle this problem, a lot more training, they've done it before. So I just want to thank him, I want to thank you, because this is one of the things that when the commi, I go to Rotary and a couple of people will come up and talk to me about the homelessness problem at the library. And I haven't had a whole lot of things that I could tell them that gave them much hope. But this was a really uplifting thing you would have passed along to him, my appreciation, because I really think that we may have a good start on starting to solve this problem.
Also, just a reminder, if you haven't seen it, at the April, I think it was the 10th city council meeting, I gave a PowerPoint presentation update on all of the security improvements that have been made to the library. So if you haven't seen that, or if you would like a copy of that PowerPoint, if you get questions from the public about what's happening at the library, what type of steps is the city taking to ensure its safety of staff and volunteers and users, that's a great place to point them, because it really shows not only the commitment from the city, but also from the Escondido Library Foundation, who provided half of the funding to make that happen. And that was really a comprehensive assessment of the campus itself. So it wasn't just security cameras, which there are obviously new and upgraded, and many, many more security cameras than we ever had in the past, but it was also lighting improvements. It was improvements to the facility itself through kind of this lens of crime prevention through environmental design. So we worked with PD to identify areas of the facility that were creating inadvertent spaces for people to do unwanted things. So we really took steps to close those off, to make sure the landscaping is trimmed and it doesn't encourage people to stash stuff or, you know, sleep in certain areas. So again, I encourage you to go back to that council meeting, watch the video, watch the presentation, and point people to it if you continue to get questions about that.
Okay. I just wanted to add that I was out, sitting out there at the last council meeting, library meeting, when this plan was proposed, and very happy to see the city, and LNS step up, they, LNS, I think put in money that is beyond the contract to help out there. I might suggest, could we maybe take a look at how things were going 30, 60 days in after this program starts and see what we, if we're totally 100% happy or any modifications can be made at that time.
Any other comments? Patricia, we have 48 hours now, I notice. How many did we have before?
Thirty-seven and a half.
So we not only increased their capabilities, but we increased the number of hours that we have support there. So that also is a big plus.
Ron, if I may. Joanna, if you could email that PowerPoint presentation to us, would be great, so we have it as well. Since we're on the subject, can I bring this up too now, or? There's two comments here. Well, one is from March 25th, which is about a month ago, so hopefully this will be taken care of. Again, the outside of library is very disgusting, homeless people and trash, very poor conditions for Escondido. So hopefully this, now with the new Rangers starting, we will be able to take care of this problem. And the second comment is the inside of the library. The smell of this library is so terrible, I would think to be healthy and pleasant for employees and visitors, it needs to be addressed. Do any of you know what this may mean, or?
We do, and we can elaborate a little bit on that too. So those are ongoing concerns that we hear, and what we have done about it, along obviously with city, is that our carpets are deep cleaned every six months, so everything is taken off the floor and deep cleaned. We have, through our janitorial service, implemented some, not air fresheners, but air deodorizers as well. And we also, Joanna, if you want to talk more about the study that Mike had done.
So our building maintenance superintendent also called out an expert to do an air quality test, so we're just awaiting the results of that, and obviously we'll take action on anything that is discovered as a result of that test. We're also looking into possible different filters in the HVAC system or air scrubbers if that's a necessity. So we take these concerns very seriously. But I think what's important to remember as well is that these comments are a reflection of a single point in time. So that person happens to come in on March 25th and sees trash outside of the library. If you drove through the library, drove past the library this morning, as I did, it was pristine, and there was nothing out there. So, you know, we take all of these concerns and comments very seriously, but I also encourage you to kind of take them with a grain of salt, because your perception of something in that moment of time could be very different than someone else's.
I also want the new board members to know that when we get these comments, Patricia will call or communicate with these people. But in this particular case, that comment was anonymous. And when you have an anonymous comment, it's a little different. It's not that we ignore it, but we can't communicate with the person. And so I wanted you to know that Patricia, she communicates and gets in touch with anyone who makes a concern or a complaint, who leaves subway to communicate with.
Correct. We also have a very good working relationship with Public Works, and the staff is very diligent and aware of what that outside of the building looks like. And anytime we see anything, if people have stashed things, if there are carts sitting that are unattended, you know, we call Public Works, and that's taken care of within usually half an hour to an hour at the most. So that, it's an ongoing issue. We are a public space, we're open seven days a week, trash will happen, but we try to make sure that that gets taken care of, and Public Works is very responsive to all of that as well.
And likewise, Ron, to your comment about Patricia responding, she's also very good about forwarding those comment cards to me. And if there's an issue that is really a city issue, it's not so much a library issue, then I step in and respond if someone provides their contact information. Or specifically related to the comments around homelessness, we've been asking Deputy City Manager William Wolfe to respond to those, because he really is our sort of central point of contact for what's being done across the city. And we want to make sure that people know that he is the contact around that and that he can really address things from a bigger picture perspective.
Awesome.
Go ahead, hit your mic.
I think it is on. How do we communicate like results of the, you know, air quality study to the public at large? Like, we are taking steps when we get these comment cards, how do we communicate that that's happening, so that people know that things are going on?
It's a really interesting question, Trustee Clemens. You know, it's a little bit of a double edged sword, because we receive maybe a handful of comments in this vein, whereas we have 1,400 people who visit our facility every single day on average. So we don't want to make a bigger deal out of something that maybe is only an issue to that handful of people who are particularly sensitive to it or are very vocal about things. So it's, there's not really a great answer to that. I mean, we, obviously, we would work very closely with the staff and let them know, particularly if nothing is found, you know, it's not really an issue to make out of. On the other hand, if something is found, we want to address that, and we would address that very quickly, but we don't necessarily want to create concern or worry amongst the public. So I don't really have a direct answer to your question, but there, I mean, I wouldn't advocate that we put this out on social media or through our newsletter or something like that. It probably is most effective in these kinds of conversations, where people who are really concerned about what's happening at the library likely are listening to these meetings or attending these meetings and hearing more of the in the weeds kind of logistical discussions about what we do to maintain the facility and things like that.
Is my mic on? Oh, thanks. I don't know, Joanna, either you or Patricia might respond to this. Has to do with the visibility as people walk into the library. And one thing, I walk in sometime, one of the major pillars, holds the overheads, goes a lot back, has concrete falling out. It needs repair, or these modifications go away. I don't know, maybe there's a plan to correct that kind of thing, or is there a plan? It's the one, it's the thing that when someone walks into the library, you're going to see it, you have to walk right by it. I must commend you though, whoever started it, there is much better cleaning up a messy sidewalk in the area. That's, that was a mess for a while and now it seems to be a problem that cleans things up for the people to walk in and talk in and out of.
Well, thank you for bringing that to my attention. I know I've been working with building maintenance, and on the west wall of the library, so the wall that faces the literacy learning center, we recently removed the sod that was in this small strip that butted up against that wall, because there were some issues with the sprinklers, and they were essentially damaging the stucco on that wall. So it's been replaced with like a mulch wood chip kind of surface, which kind of kills two birds with one stone. Number one, it saves water, and we're no longer needing to irrigate it, which means that we won't have any future issues with continued damage to the stucco. And it's also a less inviting place to camp or to sleep or to simply loiter on the property. And so the next step in that process, so you can go and see that that's all been replaced right now, and it looks great. The next step in that process is that the building maintenance staff will come and do the stucco repair, and then they'll repaint the wall. So I'll bring to the building maintenance superintendent's attention that there's some stucco on that pillar that also needs to be addressed, and I'm sure they can wrap that into the repairs that they're doing on the wall.
And Elmer, and anybody else who sees that, please report that to us at the library as well. Sometimes we see it, other times it's already been reported, so just communicate, and it's better to over communicate, and we hear it four or five times than not to hear about it at all.
No, I probably incorrectly assumed that it's so obvious that someone has reported it, but not us reported it.
Okay, Patricia, we've.
If I, just one more thing, Ron, if I may. So thank you, Patricia, and Joanna, for the explanation and clarifications. Now that we've covered the negative stuff, something on a positive note. On April 16th, there is a comment. All of the people working at or volunteering at our Escondido Library are excellent. They are very knowledgeable and very helpful, and everyone is always very friendly. We love the staff at Colmia Library. Thank you. So, thank you, ladies.
That one also, when we get those comments, as well as the things that need to be addressed, I do share those with the staff. We have a staff bulletin board that we put it up with, and I email a copy of the PDF to them. And I actually had a couple of staff members say, thanks for sharing that with us too, because it's good to you. So, thanks.
Eric, thanks for pointing that out. That's one of my pet peeves, is people who spend all their time dealing with the negatives and don't spend time on the positives. And we know how hard our staff works, and we really do as a board, really to keep that in mind all the time. And so thanks for bringing that up, I appreciate it. So Patricia, we have covered pretty well the safety and security. You talked about marketing. I'm back on the strategic plan. You talked quite a bit about outreach. I'd like to talk just a minute about what I think is one of the lighthouse programs in our library, and I want everybody in town to know about it, and that's our literacy program. If anyone ever has a chance to go to their banquet at the end of the year, you will absolutely leave there as a big proponent of our literacy program. It really is outstanding, and so I thought we might discuss that just for a little bit.
And actually, I'm glad you brought that up, because I was going to remind everybody too, that learner recognition dinner is coming up on May 16th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. And the new board members, I will make sure that you get that invitation, and the current, previous board member should receive that. And please RSVP to Myrna. The learner recognition dinner. So.
Then we can think of the literacy program.
Yes. Yep. And that is just, Ron can attest to some of the testaments of the people who have gone through the program. And I just want to remind everybody too, that the literacy program itself is staffed by one full-time person and one part-time person with our senior librarian, who also kind of oversees youth services as well as literacy. So when you look at these numbers, the number of learners, and this is, you know, through March, the learners, the volunteers, the number of instructional hours and the total volunteer hours, of course, we have awesome volunteers doing that, but this is maintained pretty much by 1.5 employees. And they are amazing. So the Scribalthon is one of their big, not only events, but it's also a fundraiser. The literacy friends board does a lot of the fundraising as well. So one of the things that several of our library support boards have been doing is kind of visiting each other's board meetings, and I would encourage you to take a look at the schedules of those, and if you're interested, I can share those with you as well. But I'm sure they would be very pleased to meet you and just get to know the new people on the board as well. So, yeah, quite a few different support groups, and like I say, I can issue that invitation as well too. Please do.
So as you can see, this is almost one-on-one. I mean, it's, that, we have that many volunteers, and for those of you who are very fluent in foreign language, you probably would not appreciate this as much as someone who, the toughest course I ever had to take, because my college required two years of foreign language. Well, I, at that point, gained a great deal of respect for people who are proficient in foreign language, but these are people, in many cases, who are not proficient in any language, and they want to learn so bad that they, they go and they meet with a tutor. These are one-on-one tutors. It's a phenomenal program. It does phenomenal things, and I think that the library and the library board should be waving their flag anytime we can, because it's such a unique, wonderful program.
Thank you. And if anybody would like to take a tour of the literacy center, or just meet with Myrna and Sheila and maybe Dan, just to hear what they do on a little bit more ground level kind of daily basis, please let me know, and we can arrange those meetings. I think that would be beneficial for everybody involved, just to see and hear that kind of thing.
The other item that I was interested in and I'm very pleased with is, you know, we, as Elmer was talking, we talk a lot about what happens at the library, but I, before I got on this board, I had no idea how much happens out in the community as a result of this library. And so as you look at this goal, connect through marketing, outreach through in library programs, and you look at all of the things, I just call your attention to all of those things that go on, that are a direct result of this library and our staff. And so it's a wonderful positive.
Thank you. And I do want to give a little shout out, obviously, to the Friends of the Library, who do a lot of actually financial support for a lot of these programs. That enables our staff to buy different types of materials for the crafts. It allows for materials for our 3D printer. It allows for, you know, snacks for the teens. So those are really important things, and we definitely appreciate that, that support from the Friends. So, thank you.
Patricia, do you have anything else to report on the strategic plan?
Just that every day, in every possible way, this is happening, so.
Our next item is the library director's report.
So just a few things to add again, I want to remind you that that learner recognition dinner... dinner that we were just talking about, if you haven't already added that to your calendar, is happening on May 16th, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. So, please, hopefully we'll see you there. And just some staffing updates. Our new library associate who will be working primarily as a page is starting the week of May 6th and his name is Pedro Lopez. And we are very happy to have him coming on board. And we are in the interview process and screening process for the open position of librarian two for adult services. So, yeah, that about wraps that part of it up. Any other questions about anything?
Ron, maybe either now or. Can we get an update on the process of the selection of new librarian and where that is now and to what degree the trustees become involved in that process?
So, the last update that I received, there were four candidates who had been elevated to the level that they were being interviewed by some of the top LSNS staff. And they will narrow that candidate pool down to the top one or two, if there really are two excellent candidates. At that point, we will have an opportunity to meet them, myself and you guys on the board. And it'll be very similar to the process we went through when we were bringing Patricia onboard, where you have an opportunity to ask questions and to provide your feedback, likely through me, and then I would share that with LSNS staff who are handling the interview process. So, if you have any major concerns or red flags, you know, that's an opportunity to be able to provide that feedback and then we would work with LSNS to either resolve those issues or if it's a misunderstanding or it continued the search. And I, I think the timeline on that is probably by the end of May.
I, I, I appreciate.
Right. So, by the next board, by the May board meeting, we would hope to have the candidates to be able to introduce.
I really appreciate that, because I cannot tell you how many people ask me, because obviously we had a contentious issue in the city or the privacy, making, privatizing our library. And the question that I'm always asked is, "Do you have anything to do with hiring the librarian?" Well, Patricia turned out so well that of course I said, "Absolutely, I hired her." No, but that, that is, I was shocked at how many people wanted to know, because I think the community thinks that a major job of the library board of trustees is to have some input in the hiring of our leader. And so, since we were able to do that with Patricia, I was always able to say, "Yes, we, we did have an opportunity to meet and ask." So, I really appreciate the fact that we're going to get that opportunity again.
Yeah, and I really give LSNS credit for that, because, I mean, to the letter of the contract, LSNS is responsible for the staffing of the library. So, you know, it, it's out of goodwill and a willingness to want to have input from the board and from the city through my participation, that they're allowing this process to move forward the way that it has. It's a unique situation for a board to be this involved in the vetting of a candidate for a position, like a director level position. There are no other city boards that are really involved in this kind of process when it comes to other city level directors. So, I think that you should feel very grateful to be involved in the process. I certainly do and I just want to give LSNS credit for that as a business practice.
Thank you. Any other items, Patricia?
The only thing I do want to remind and or clarify with the board is just previously and per the bylaws, the May board meeting is when you'll be voting for the president and the secretary.
Do we have any other questions or comments?
I just wanted to let everybody know that for the meeting schedule for June, I won't be able to attend. So, if we're going to have quorum, then we should be fine. Otherwise, if you guys like to reschedule it, let me know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a really excellent reminder. Thank you, Trustee Gorni. If any of you are planning to travel or you know you're going to be missing future meetings, if you could communicate that in advance to Patricia and that way, if we do want to look at rescheduling a meeting, because there potentially would not be a quorum, it's very helpful to know in advance when you'll be gone.
Thank you. If there's no other business, do we need a motion to adjourn?
I will motion.
Okay, it's been motioned by Clemmons and seconded by Gorni. All of them, please vote. We are adjourned.
You guys are welcome for proceeding. Yay!